All right, it is the time and place, October 1st. I will call the meeting to order. Ashley, you want to do roll call, please?
Limberg.
Here.
Nippert.
Here.
Shaven.
Here.
Kroger, here. Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
And we've all gotten the agenda. I don't think there was anything in there taking anything out, putting anything in. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? No motion.
Second.
Motion by Shaven, second by Nippert.
Roll call Limberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
State any conflicts now or along the way. Under the consent agenda, these are all under one motion, one roll call vote. We have the minutes of the September 17th, 2024 council meeting. Claims list 1323 and the amount of $94,979.48. Think you all saw the list of some of the larger amounts. Any questions? Concerns, any of those? No? Renewal application for Mont's Inc., doing business as Purple Door, Class C alcohol license. And a renewal application for Taylor Oil Enterprises Limited, doing business as Taylor Quick Pick, Class E alcohol license. Motion for the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Hold on, I hope that would be out there. Nippert is the motion. I'm gonna go with Kroger. She's right next to me. Sorry, guys, for the second.
Roll call Limberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Those guys are on like a 10-second delay. They're never gonna get a motion or a second. Other business is the review of the street closing permit for downtown Harvest Fest celebration Saturday, October 26th, 2024, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Any... Maybe I saw it.
A wonderful annual event.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any updates, Todd, against your packet?
No, it's just our standard, you know, we'll do the across the street. The inside of the corners so people can go around. They just can't get out of the square. We have just had so many kids moving around out there. So we're gonna try to keep the cars off. Gonna have, it sounds like nine vendors. So what we do is we offer, you know, small vendors to come. We don't charge them for it. That way, if we have a weather issue, we don't have to worry about trying to return their money. But got the games going, got the movie going, and got a lot of volunteers. So it should be, should be a good time. Hopefully, the weather will support us on this one, because last year it was really cold.
It's definitely one of those weather-dependent.
Yeah. Weather-dependent event, yes.
Do you know what the movie is, Todd?
It's Monster House.
Is that trick-or-treating then, that day then, too? Businesses trick-or-treating?
Yeah, that's, uh, they'll be walking around between 1:00 and 2:00. And then we'll get the barriers broken down and get them out of the way.
Okay. All right, is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven.
Roll call Limberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
P is Resolution 2579. C of Harlan establishing an official date and time for trick-or-treating activities, Beggars Night, Halloween, 2024.
This has traditionally been done, as far as officially setting it, has generally been under my report for the past number of years. We felt it was a good idea to just put that in the form of a stated resolution. The date, the time is similar to what it's been for a handful of years now, six, seven, eight years at least, within my timeframe as administrator. That time seemed to have worked well in the past, prior to some of the high school football playoff timeframes. That's all changed to Fridays. There used to be, you know, based upon that, that event sometimes had some different evenings for trick-or-treat, but this will be on October 31st, which is a Thursday. And this is the formal statement to that effect.
Motion for Resolution 2579.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Nippert, second by Shaven.
Roll call Limberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 2580 is to submit a project for apron expansion and authorize the city administrator to sign required documents.
With the FAA project timelines and timeframes for FY25, this is a, been on the capital improvement plan as a next phase of airport improvements. With these data sheets or early applications, just a reminder that this is not a commitment to the FAA or an FAA commitment to us. So there's no commitment of money, although this resolution states if it were to happen, what those engineering estimates might look like at this time. The reason that the Airport Commission and our engineers want to make this submission is that for the next two years, that AIP Airport Improvement Funds, the FAA or federal share is going up to 95%. So based upon our local match, we'd like to maximize those opportunities. This is the resolution. Again, this is in your packet, but just for the public and the initial data sheets are... The orange area would be the expanded apron area. What that will facilitate is, one of the key projects that's been identified is eventually getting to above-ground fuel tanks out of the airport. And with expansion of the apron, it will allow for the next project, which would be getting the fuel tanks out of the ground and above ground, which has become much more the best practice and standard with fueling operations. But you can see this little box dotted area here. That's where the intended location of the future above-ground fuel station will then be. Airport movement or plane movement, not in the center of this apron area, expands the tie-downs. So that's what that project involves. This is an initial statement to the FAA that this is what they'd like to do. And this would authorize me to get that submitted and put it in their court for them to respond, similar to what the timelines have been with past airport projects.
Okay, any questions? All right, is there a motion for Resolution 2580?
Motion.
Second.
Who was that?
Limberg.
That would be Limberg coming in strong.
Oh, there's the other guy, okay. All right, I'll give, I'll give, I'll give the motion to Kroger. I'll give it to Limberg for a second, just because I'm feeling bad for him. Who knows where he's at?
Thank you, Mayor.
I think he can feel needed.
Coming up on quarterly, actually.
Roll call Limberg.
Looking at the tank space.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Resolution 2581, accept and approve fiscal year 2024 annual urban renewal report for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2024. This one for Ashley?
You bet.
Reader's Digest version of what she did.
There were just a few numbers there. Just a few.
Just a few.
We won't.
Just a new report.
Just a bunch of stuff.
Just a bunch of stuff. The numbers match where they're supposed to, so I was happy.
That's always good.
Yep.
Similar to the AFR, the Street Financial Report, this one as well, it's a statement of what happened in the previous fiscal year. And as Ashley pointed out a little earlier, the balance on which page was that, Ashley?
The first page.
Oh, yes.
At the bottom.
That 94,628 matches to what that balance was.
It was June 30th.
And then it's in November, by December 1st is when the TIF certification, we were just discussing that earlier.
Yep, so.
So the other, when we have to certify any of the TIF debt, that happened before December 1st, and that will come to you in November timeframe, so. Good job for Ashley. I know she was looking through her tutorials and I'm sure maybe lean on, lean on maybe Ted.
Yep.
A time or two from the state, so nice job in getting that completed.
Good job.
Okay, motion for Resolution 2581.
Motion.
Give those guys a chance today. Nothing.
Okay.
I think that was Kyle.
Motion.
That was Limberg.
Limberg, yeah, man. What a gunner.
Johnny on the spot. 528 right now.
Roll call Limberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 2582, naming depositories. Does somebody do every...
This is an update.
Update?
Um, and I'll provide a little more context to this. But the update on this is that as we were looking at other things last week, we felt it was important to update this, that this previously added Bank of the West.
Oh, yeah.
So they've been removed, and then Town and Country Credit Union with the merger, that this reflects that that becomes Community First on December 1st. So putting this in front of you just for getting it updated instead of waiting. And the catalyst to this is we've been taking a look at our cash management and investment current, or resolution and our current methods and strategies. I reached out to you all in last week that for our taxpayer, we can certainly do better than we have on our cash management account. So Ashley, Jen, Malone, and myself have had a number of conversations in the past three business days, and, which is why we're looking to schedule a Personnel and Finance Committee meeting. Yet there are some immediate things we can do within our investment policy to increase our, lackluster to say, less than a tenth of a percent in our main checking account. But that's what led to us looking at this document and getting these depositories updated. There are a number of instruments out there that are publicly available. One of them we're going to capitalize on immediately is a money market that will go from about a tenth of a percent to three and a quarter. And we'll get that done pronto, but then look to some other methodologies and strategies that could be used that we'll talk through at Personnel and Finance. But that's the background to why this is coming up to you at this point, so.
Okay. Motion for Resolution 2582.
Motion.
Second.
What's up, Peterson?
Yes, it was.
Motion by Peterson, second by Kroger.
Roll call Limberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
City Administrator's Report.
Some update information I'll pass along, that next week, October 6th to the 12th, is Fire Prevention Awareness Week, an annual week every year. Number of activities our department will be participating in. First, as always, will be the Pancake Breakfast and the breakfast down at the Fire Hall. That's Saturday, excuse me, Sunday, starting at 7:00 a.m. Free will donation, go down and see the Fire Hall, all the equipment and how nice things look, and show support to those responders would be wonderful. I also know that they'll be having some school activities with the children. And then, I don't know, maybe Richard, you know, one or two nights pizza deliveries with fire trucks?
Monday through Thursday.
Okay, a couple nights, so three or four nights. That's seemed to be well received and creates awareness, and also some driver training for the drivers for that equipment. So that's happening next week, and so show support to our volunteer fire squad. Also, a quick update there that in the last, in one of the last meetings, there are three potential new members that the department will be acting on next month at their meeting. So great to see numbers increasing at the fire department. I think it speaks that things are going well and a great team and family to join there. Tentatively, October 21st, weather dependent, that, and I'm saying this now, by the time some of this might air, that on Sixth Street, we're looking to, we'll be adjusting three manholes, so there'll be a three-block portion for a day that, that three-block section, there'll be plenty of other communication, because that's a well-traveled road. But we're going to raise three of the sewer manholes there that have continually been a dip, and they just need to be raised. So that's tentatively planned for October 21st, weather dependent, and we'll have more public communication out prior to that date. The sewer lining project, which again, we've approved, and I had, actually had a pre-construction meeting last week. The tentative date was to start in November, and we got a little bit of a surprise last Friday when they called and said, oh, we could deploy crews next Monday. And between our engineer and myself, that we had said, a few more boxes that need to be checked, and we will not do anything to risk not having, between the BABA, which is Build America By America requirements, as well as similar to others, some federal projects where we've had a large sign in front of City Hall, which is where we'll place that that sign needs to be up. And it would be silly for a small technicality like that to put at risk any of the funding, so. Although they had crews ready, we were all very surprised because they told us about a week earlier it'd be November 3rd. And we know the ebb and flow of construction teams and timing, but still looking at the first part of November with that sewer lining project, and they're estimating about a six-week timeframe. Again, that's weather dependent, so that's where we're at with that. The nice weather has provided an opportunity for the continued removal of Emerald Ashbore, and approximate count is in the 15 or so range of those within the public right-of-way and public space. So hats off to Jeff and that entire streets team in, we'll say, making hay here the last number of weeks on those Emerald Ashbore trees. So I'd say that looks pretty solid that that'll be completed by year end, which was just a hats off for that monumental project. At the County Board of Supervisors this morning, Todd was there as well. Dr. Kinney from Iowa Western Community College was there to address the Board of Supervisors. And I'll just pass these around. I know there's information on the radio, other public information, but this is regarding their upcoming bond, I believe it's 11 million, 55 million, $55 million bond for their programs and facilities. And Dr. Kinney did a wonderful job of presenting the continued shift in, you know, community college and certifications, as well as career and technical education, and certainly the partnership with our local community college, and the enhancements due to the additional space on the north side that we needed over for a dollar to make those opportunities for students as well as businesses come to reality, and that's definitely paying dividends. So this was information more or less just about that bond, and just reminding folks to get out and vote. So I won't just pass those around, but wanted to share that with you as well.
Yeah, two key items on that for the public is, one, they have bonds that are maturing and going away. So this bond will not raise the community college levy at all, because it'll just, you know, be filling in things that are falling off. The other main thing is their focus on this is HVAC and electric and plumbing. They're, they're just, the building they're in right now, he said, they've got 77 students in a building that's, in a room that's only supposed to have 55.
And this was down to main campus.
This is down to main campus. So they'll expand into this new building, and the space they're in now will open up for other technical, and they're really focusing on two-year degree technical certifications for service jobs in the area right now, because that's what they're hearing from all over the industry, is just get them two years, get them certified, then we'll bring them in and teach them everything they need to know. So it's a very positive thing for us, because it'll help us keep kids here. Hopefully, many of them will come back to our area to fill those jobs that we have open.
Yeah, thanks for that additional information, Todd. A week and a half ago, Ashley and myself and Councilmember Kelly, although she's not here, and then Mayor Jay was able to attend one day at our Annual League of Cities up in Sioux City. It's nice to have it in the western part of the state. I know it didn't work for a few of your schedules, and that was unfortunate. Reminder that next year is in Des Moines for the annual conference. That'll be generally the third, the fourth week of September. And the opportunity not only for appointed staff such as Ashley and I, this was Ashley's first time at the league, but the opportunity not only to network with peers, but also the educational sessions are top-notch. I sat through one on housing, which was excellent, and the other was a TIF, another TIF update on utilization of that instrument. Mayor, any comments from your experience there? I think that's the first league.
First one I mean, and I...
You're in and out in one day, but I hope it was...
Yeah, I mean, it's a great experience. It's one of those things, I sat in the council seat for a number of years and never went, and now being in the mayor's chair, I'm glad I went, and I think it's something that everybody should try. I mean, there go the excuses, you know, you don't have time and to do all that, but it just gives you the opportunity to spend time with people like us that are doing what we do here, but then they're just regular people, too. You know, and it kind of reinforces, you know, the good, the bad, the whatever it is that, you know, while we're here is, most of these communities are going through the same things we are, and they're the same people, you know, none of them are, they might have the same experience or whatever they have, but it's just, they talk the same language we do. You know, they're not any better at it, they're not any worse at it, but they're just doing it kind of the same way we're doing it. And you get to see people that, you know, like Gene and Ashley, that are there because they live it every day, and exposures, get exposed to them, too. But I, yeah, I wish, shame on me for not going the last, you know, eight or nine years, because I think it's something that, if it's gonna be in Des Moines, it'd be a great opportunity for one or two more, at least council members or all of us to go, because that's, it's just one of those things that, and to be together, too. That's part of the experience, is, you know, we sit here and do this a couple times a month, and we get together at noon hour once in a while, but just to spend some time amongst our peers from, you know, the Des Moines, but also from the Atlantics, from the winter sets, from the towns I'd never even heard of. I didn't know they're out there. And something, and you would think, you know, we deal with a lot of things. Some of these communities, they deal with a lot more stuff, and they're a lot smaller scale, and, but some of our mountains they've got to climb, they make ours, you know, they look like mountains, what they're gonna do, they look like hills, because we've got some things, we're gonna, next few years are gonna be some challenges, and it's just good to hear from them, you know. I think we're doing okay, you know. And a lot of people did talk to, I know they talked to Gene, talked to me, and I did talk to the sheriff. They're curious about what we've done the last year, you know, whether it be law enforcement, whether it be EMS, just other things, and how'd you do it? I just said, talk to Gene. Come back and talk to, you know, the folks in our community, talk to the sheriff, talk to EMS, those kind of things that, you know, and it all kind of goes back to, we're lucky, you know? There's some communities, counties and cities, schools don't get along. We're lucky if we do, and that's how we accomplished a lot of things this last few years, and I don't think that's gonna go away. There's gonna be a few more things we're gonna have to talk about, so. But it was a good experience. I wish I could have gone. And some of the pictures I saw of our, our crew, they did their part. Was it 70s? Is that what you guys were celebrating? 80s? What were you celebrating the day, the night before?
Well, just so happens.
Did you have some show and tell? I figured you had. You should, because...
There is one show and tell.
I understand you guys stood out.
Since the mayor's kind of teed this up.
Sorry I missed that part, so.
So every year for the vendor session, and there are vendors from, I mean, existing partners we work with, for example, we were able to go and meet and speak face-to-face with HomeServe, which is our service line warranty program, folks, talk with folks from our insurance carrier, EMC, talk with our engineer partners, and you've been at exhibit halls before, so, and that's the first evening, and for years they've had a theme, they usually announce a theme for those first evenings, and we generally try to participate to show our enthusiasm and spirit, and it ranges from sporting teams to western attire to, well, this happened to be the 70s theme, and this is your team truly from the city of Harlan representing you all.
Better be some bell bottoms in there.
So if that doesn't bring some pride and joy to, and I'm convinced that if there would have been an award for the best dressed team from a community, and we did have a few folks, they were like, you guys need to win an award. So we represented Harlan quite well. And some of my peers had to get pretty close to me and said, that is Mr. Geddes. So, and yes, those are pants of my father's from the 70s. So although a lot of learning, a lot of networking, there is some fun involved, too, and so we attempted to represent well, and Ashley and Jenny were truly 70s style, the great trio there, so.
Love the jacket.
We can talk and discuss that later, yes. Other comments, you chair, mayor?
No, you did seem to be...
Thanks for coming.
You knew everybody, they knew you. I'm sure it'll be the same thing with Ashley. Give her another year or two, they'll be like, oh, yeah, I know Ashley, yeah.
Well...
It was good to talk to the vendors. That was one thing, the HomeServe and those kind of people that, because, you know, we've been on the phone call with other people, and they, maybe you've been here, but to meet them and talk to them for more than just a few minutes on the phone is a good thing, you know, put a face with a name. And so, yeah, those are, those are good things. The networking there that can be done is a great thing, so.
As an example, just yesterday, and this was an individual I had met early on through the league, as well as through some of my administrator conference, a gentleman we set up time with yesterday in Mason City, Brent Hinson, that Ashley, Jen, and I spoke with him yesterday for, to provide us his, his experience and expertise. He's been, he'd been an administrator for, in two different communities, and he's now the finance director up in Mason City, but that was a relationship and contact I established early on, and was able to reach out to him and talk about our investment strategy and cash management, and all of their, their bank accounts are 10 times our size up in Mason City, the same methods and strategies apply. So an example of how these types of conferences and reap dividends, you may not, you know, see those right away, but certainly those connections and relationships are helpful. This was handed out, and I picked up enough copies for all of you. This was reviewed at the league, and it's called the Legislative Advocacy Toolkit. This was reviewed actually the first afternoon at the business meeting, the annual business meeting at the League of Cities. And if you're not already signed up, I know some of you are, yet they're, you know, as we come into the next legislative session, which is starting here after the first of the year, but there's a QR code on back or a website where you can go, you know, every week there's a legislative link that comes out to elected officials, anyone who signed up for this, to talk about what's going on at the Hill, of things that are, just for your notes, Ashley, that Richard just dropped off at 5:45, that to allow to, you know, monitor bills that might be impacting cities. If there's a bill that we're strongly supportive or opposed to, it'd allow us to, and you as well, to comment on that. And in addition, the league established the top three priorities, which were insightful. So if you look at the bottom of the front cover, these are across the state, the top three initiatives from a league perspective. The first is kind of near and dear to our hearts, that what we've experienced and what we've managed to is police officer recruitment, recognition, and training and retention. The second is public notice timing disparity, and this is with the House File 718 from a year ago. The timing of notices and also publication requirements needs additional clarification, and the league wants that clarified for the entire state. And then the third is, I run, I mean, it might seem a little bit trivial, but... And then the third is, I might seem a little bit trivial, but based upon some case law that got established here back early spring, is sidewalk maintenance and liability, based upon a banker's trust versus Splitberger, I think, was the case, that has made it murky water again as to sidewalk liability. And we spoke with city attorney a week ago, and the league is taking this very seriously to get that back to what it was for the past 30 years, that not only maintenance, but also liability is that responsibility of the abutting property owner versus the city having, of all the sidewalks from town. So, I thought that was very important, and I'll definitely encourage you, if you're not signed up for that legislative link, that you get signed up for that. And the last item I have to share is just a little bit of recognition and kudos that Doug Harms, one of our wastewater operators, he tested last week and achieved his grade two operator certification. So, based upon his length of time and then being able to go test, so that now allow, we now have grade three to grade twos. And then Josh Heck will eventually get his grade one as our newest operator. Nice job to Doug. Celebrate that for him. And that's all I have, unless you have comments or questions for, for me.
All right, thanks, Jean. I don't have anything under my report. Move on to Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, Todd Levine.
Good evening. Few updates and a couple of calendar items. Last week, I was in Marshalltown at the Professional Developers of Iowa Conference. And it was interesting that it was held in Marshalltown. This is a conference that's normally held in Iowa City or Cedar Rapids or Councils, you know, large areas. But Marshalltown put together a really concerted effort to be able to host this particular one. And the reason why is they've been using a lot of public art in their community to start on a really strong placemaking effort that will finish with this, we saw the drawings of it, this amazing park that they're going to put in Marshalltown through a grant from IEDA. It's going to have just walking trails and water all over the place, and it's just, it's just going to be beautiful when they get done with it. So, while we were there, some of the main things we talked about were some of the changes that have happened at IEDA, as the governor has been cutting down and moving offices around. There's a lot more that falls underneath IEDA right now. So, we discussed all of that. And a part of that that we discussed is, it just so happens, we're going into the next round of what are called catalyst grants, community catalyst grants. And we've done one here before. And what this is, simply said, is it's a grant program where you can receive up to $100,000 for your project. What it has to do, it has to be a catalyst in the community. So, that can be anything from adding additional jobs, growth of a newer existing business, development of new housing, increasing property values, or creating an opportunity for potential population growth. We get the honor of hosting a workshop for this catalyst grant on October 18th from 10 to 12 at the Turkelson Center. And we've been putting out to the community and to the business owners that if you have a building that you are thinking about remodeling or thinking about renovating, it doesn't even have to be next year, it's important that you attend this workshop. Because when you do your application, the applicants who attend this workshop usually score much higher on their application than the people who don't attend this workshop, because they do a great job of walking you through what they're looking for with a lot of examples of projects that have taken place in the past. So, just to spread that word, that it's going to be October 12th at the Turkelson Center from 10 to noon. There's no pre-registration or anything like that. You just, just show up for the workshop. Quick note for your calendars, if you haven't heard, there was a planned ribbon cutting next Monday at Mertu for the new ER. That's been postponed, and we hope to see a new date scheduled here pretty soon. Reminder that a week from this Thursday, August 10th, at 7:30 in the morning, we're having a business networking before business at Milk and Honey. We'll have some breakfast items and, but this has opened up all businesses in Shelby County. You don't have to be a member of the chamber to attend these business networking events. The key of these is we want to just get people in the room, start talking to each other. More often than not, somebody will find out, that somebody offers a product or service that they didn't know they offered. And if they're currently buying from, you know, someplace else out of county, then we can hopefully bring that business back into the county. Fun day coming up, a week from Saturday, from 4 to 6 out of Nishna, it's their annual No Tricks Just Treats, where all the campers set up their spots and kids can go out and trick or treat. There'll be a fresh encounter and others out there with s'mores and other things going on, so just a reminder to the public on that. And then this Thursday, if people are needing influenza shots, they're going to have two opportunities. One's going to be here in Harlan from 11 to 2. But that one, you do need to make an appointment for. And the number to call is 755-4308. These are all drive-through clinics, so you just, you'll pull up at your appointed time. They do ask that you wear a short-sleeved shirt, which makes it a lot easier for them to give you the shot. If you're unable to do that 11 to 2 here in Harlan, there's one in the morning from 8 to 9:30 up in Panama, and that's at St. Mary's Church Hall. Now, that one, you aren't required to have an appointment. You can just pull up between 8 and 9:00, get in line and get an influenza shot. And again, they ask that you wear a short-sleeved shirt, which from the weather, it looks like that won't be a problem, so... So, with that, that's, that's it from the chamber.
Was that catalyst grant, city or county?
It's city. So, what happens is if we have somebody who wants to apply, it's private, yeah? We apply through iowagrams.gov at, through the city. And then, the way it works is if the project's approved, when they get nearer the 50% mark of completing their project, we do a quick walkthrough, check things out, take a look at it. If we agree with them that they're at 50%, then they can do a 60% draw on whatever grant amount that they've received. And then when the project's done and complete, then representatives from IEDA will come take a look at it. And if they agree that it's complete, then that other 40% is available. So, it is a reimbursement grant, it's not an upfront grant.
And the previous project some of you may be familiar with was the 601 Court, which is Jerry Hinchite's building just across the street from Bowers to the west. And that was a restoration for two upper-story living units. I think some of you had a tour of that, which is quite magnificent, and also lower-story retail. And that was a catalyst grant, and it was, you know, received a $100,000 state funds. It's, we're essentially the local management of the funds, and we have a development agreement with that local individual. The local individual has to match that at least, and then they usually like to see a little bit of public funds. And ours was done through our historical AGPC program, so... We would love to see another catalyst grant.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great to have another one. They have actually kind of expanded a little bit. Back when we did that first project, a lot more of the focus was on a retail lower level and a housing upper level. Now, you can work on just a housing project, or if we have, if, if, if the project makes the building just safer for everybody, you can do that. Again, if you, if it's job growth and, you know, job growth that is impactful, if you redo the building, then that counts enough too.
Is there, there's just the one grant though?
It is, I can't remember the number.
If you just had a couple of businesses with ideas that wanted to use...
No, no, there's only one grant per city, per project.
Okay.
Every year, yeah. But it is something that does happen annually.
Competitive, so it's not, we're not guaranteed to have our own project, right?
Well, no, no, I mean...
It's competitive, and the, this last couple of years, like 20 to 30, like on appropriation of funding.
One of the...
20 or 30 other communities in the state to get awarded.
With my peers last week, one of the things that we were talking about is, but a lot of people don't, you just don't realize, there's 954 communities in the state of Iowa. So, that's 954 cities you're competing against for this catalyst grant. And then it even falls into some of the other grant opportunities through IEDA, like one, they say this grant is only for populations of 50,000 or less. Well, when you look at those 954 communities, there's only 10 that are over 50,000. So, you're competing with 944 other communities for that. The other one is less than 20,000. Well, you don't go very much further, you go from 10 to 18. There's only 18 communities in Iowa with 20,000 or more people. So, that's why all of these things are really super competitive. And going to these workshops and stuff is important if you're thinking about applying, because they'll basically walk you through what you need to put in that application.
Todd, this, and this catalyst grant, it's for rehabilitation of an existing building, correct, not new construction?
It's not for new construction, no. It's to, is to rehab buildings that we already have in town. And again, just improve the property, hopefully raise the property, I mean, raise the value of the property and create some other type of catalyst. So, like, in this case with Jerry's, the catalyst was, we had a nicer retail space down below, and then we had two new places for housing in his project.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Natalie. Hard Missile Utilities, Joe Rouschenberg.
Hello, everyone. Start with a couple of updates here, raw water improvement project update. McCarthy Trenching finished the Crush Rock access road to Southwell Field. Also finished grading and seeding yesterday, so we're getting closer. McCarthy and their subcontractors are still finishing some punch list items this week. And then we hope to have Caboy Pump Service moving on site for the deep well number 35 next week, we're hoping. That's the whole thing, I guess, just how they finish up with the projects they're on, or they've been having some equipment problems too, stuff breaking down and not being able to get done where they're at. But hopefully they can get that well drilling break here and get started. Overhead underground electric project update, LFI slash Burns Electric, continue to pull wire and set equipment throughout town. All directional boring is complete on the project. Next item, just wanted to put out there, our live streaming on our HC15, Channel 15, and on our YouTube channel is getting good reviews by the public, I think, as far as live streaming and everything being in HD. We're getting a lot of good comments on that, feedback, so forth on that too. So, like I said, people can tune in on that YouTube channel to watch all this for instance, We did have a new employee start in our water department, Chris Krakermeyer. He started on September 3rd in the water department. Brian Crable started on last Monday, September 23rd, as our new IT coordinator. And then Reed Meeker started today as our newest apprentice lineman. So, at that point, all our departments are fully staffed, but it's kind of a little bit of a battle to get, things are coming around there. So, we're sitting good as far as full employment, departments being fully staffed. Any questions or concerns for me? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Comments from the public? Comments from up here? Kyle, you got any comments where you're driving, wherever you're driving still, or are you home?
Well, I just want to let you know, I just safely made it home here about seven minutes ago, but I would, just have one question for Jean. I wonder if it's a possibility, can we bring that hair back from your 70s?
You must have maybe seen another photo, I'm not sure I shared that, but I mean, you've probably seen it, I've heard it was floating around, which, that should be restricted.
I may have seen it, yes, yes. I thought it was a great picture and great representation, you guys all look good, but I just really love the hair.
It's a proud, very proud moment for some of my family, I would love to share that. But thank you, Kyle.
We all, we all like your hair back in the 70s, so...
Other than that, I have nothing further. Sorry I couldn't be there in person today.
What's that?
That's all.
All right, meeting adjourned.